Susan, would you please take roll call?
Counselor Halliburton.
Present.
Counselor McElraha.
Present.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Counselor Hallabaugh.
Present.
Counselor Mackey.
At this.
Mayor Lynn.
Here. All right, council, I would look for a motion to adopt the agenda. I will just note that you have something on your, in front of you for Jim's application number seven, there is a correction on the amount. Other than that, everything looks to be in order. Oh, in addition of the police commission for the open boards and commissions. That is also in front of you. The, we were missing one item on there, so that's added in front of you. So I look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Marty.
Second.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start tonight with public participation. We have Darlene Salo here tonight. I would just like to start before we go any further on this, to let everybody at home know that citizens of this community do have the right to come and speak for five minutes. We cannot regulate what is said. There is no fact checking here. I would just like to say, Darlene, that you don't have a lot of support up here. I believe the council as a whole does not agree with your stance, your opinions. And I just want to let everybody know at home that there was no favoritism towards any city councillors with any tree removals. This location down there is classified as a park, it is not a playground. And it does match the other two parking areas that do circle the lake. So Darlene, you can come and speak for five minutes. I would request that you keep it professional, not attacking certain board members and questioning their health and wellness, and just leave it to what you feel.
Okay, I would like, because it's public record, I would like to post the mechanics, the tables, and the paving. I'd like that in writing, so I have something.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
For that information, the city has a data request policy. You could come down to City Hall and fill out the form, and then that information will be provided.
Okay, and then my understanding was I had somebody call me and tell me on social media that there was foundation money that was spent on that project, which was, I should have had something to say, because that was card money from my husband's funeral, so.
What foundation? The Chisholm Community Foundation? Yeah, I suggest you can go talk to the community foundation.
I will. And then who decided the location? The board, the beautification board, or this board, the council?
I believe the Beautification Association came to us.
And then, did you have a permit from the state of Minnesota, being that the state owns the property, but the county isn't?
Again, you can ask that in your data request form.
And then I'd like to tell you this. Dave Tomassoni was a good friend to my husband's and also a classmate. So I will be visiting with his children. And the reason for that is that I know Dave would have never, ever, ever agreed to put that in front of my property or my husband's property or our families, because he also owned adjacent property after they died. So having said that, I will continue that conversation with his children. But I think being that the property down there has been in our family for 75 years, my husband's family, I think that the decisions that were made were poor decisions when there's many, many other locations. I mean, we've got the Ironman with parking. There was money spent down here that makes absolutely no sense. You've got two parking lots off the lake, a park. You've got a dishealth course with parking already. There really, really was no reason for a park. And that's not just a park, that's a veterans' park. And the veterans' memorial be a unique part. But on the interstate, we spent a hell of a lot of money. So it isn't about attacking anybody, but I'm out my trees, my privacy, my view. And just one other thing, when the assessments were done a few years ago, we had Selman's Law Office prior to that do the surveying on those lots. Walt and I paid for that. One pin was in the middle of the alley, the other was on the other side of my house that I lived in. When they dug there, those pins disappeared. That alley isn't correct either, just so that you're aware of that. So if I have it re-surveyed with my surveyors, I'm not going to pay again. I think the city should get the bill for that. So we'll leave it at that for right now. But in two weeks, I will be back.
Mayor, if I may just make a comment. And I apologize, Ms. Salo, the last time I was present at the meeting, while you were present, I indicated to the council that I would look into the project a little bit and kind of take a look at that. And I just want the council to know, and Ms. Salo to deliver this report again while you're here, so that you can hear it. I have looked into the project, I've researched it. I've looked at the permitting, I find that it's all in order. I haven't gotten a lot of information about the funding related to the project, because I think a lot of that was supplied by outside entities. And so theoretically, I could dig into that a little bit more. And I've looked into potential liability based on the project. And I find no more liability with that project than with any other park or project that circles or encompasses the lake. By what I've researched and the, looking into the project that I've done, I don't find anything to be out of order. Everything looks like it was done appropriately, the permitting was all correct. I know the county signed off on the new cut in the curb, and everything appears to be in good order.
Thank you, Brian.
Can I say something?
No. Moving on. Counselor Reports, Counselor Hallabaugh, good evening.
Good evening, I attended the EDA meeting via telephone. I attended the capital improvement meeting, and we have a garden meeting scheduled for October 21st at 5:30 PM at the Baptist Church.
Thank you. Counselor McElraha, good evening.
Good evening. I attended a Rams Board meeting, a budget working session, and an HRA working session, and the public furniture board meeting.
So, thank you. Counselor Foden, good evening.
Good evening, I have no phone reports.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Counselor Halliburton, good evening.
Good evening. This weekend out at Redhead is the Minnesota Cyclone Association final race of the season. Their finale is being held out there. There will be approximately 1,700 high school age kids racing their bikes around Redhead, and expecting 2,500 to 3,000 people out there. And we've got a lot of volunteers that have stepped up to help with parking cars and campers. So it's going to be very busy. See, a lot of activity out there this weekend, that's what's going on.
Excellent. Well, thank you to anyone who's volunteering, and those that are volunteering, counselor. And yeah, it's going to be another well-attended event. Myself had a planning and zoning meeting on Monday, the EDA meeting. Planning and zoning, we are looking at some things. Hopefully Brian can make our next one.
I'll be there.
Perfect. We'll have another meeting on the 21st this month. Yeah, other than that, I believe that's it. If anyone has any questions for me. Analyst Director, good evening, Tiffany.
Good evening, I have no report to ask, big questions at the evening.
Assistant Fire Chief Worley, good evening.
Quick report. Mayor, council, so, quick report from the fire department. I know it's been a little bit since we've been here, been pretty busy. Third quarter reports, we had 58 calls. So that makes us 161 total for the year, we're at 200 this year. I'm pretty confident we will. Chris and I attended the traffic incident management meeting over in Virginia. First meeting they really had in this area for that. They're looking at starting a north and a south coalition now for San Luis County. It's going to be, it's a good group, it was right down to tow truck drivers and everything else. It's looking at coalition, actually stop getting hit on the highway. So we're putting a lot of safety measures in place, a lot of ideas and everything else. We got a crew down at the bond this week for firefighter safety. Showing off the new truck to the kids and teaching fire prevention down there. And then October, fire prevention this week. And this year's theme is smoke detectors, make them work for you. And then think about a smoke lamp should be installed every bedroom, outside each sleeping area, and on each floor, including the basement, and you'll know for each of batteries in the pollen and spring. If anybody has trouble getting, if anybody knows anybody that needs fire, smoke detectors in the communities, send them to us. We have resources, we'll give them detectors. And that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions for me.
I'll just piggyback on that, really detection is what save lives. Check your batteries, check your detector weekly, you know, sounds kind of silly, do it every week, but it's a very small test.
No, and if you've got kids, run the test with your kids, because I'd almost guarantee they sleep through it.
Thank you. Police Chief.
Hi, I have nothing.
Building official, Mandy, good evening. City Engineer, Jim.
Real quick, just to give you a status update on a couple of projects that we have going. On our mill and overlay project, the streets have been milled and overlaid. The alleys are done, with the exception of doing some restoration of the shouldering, if you will, of the new bituminous to give rid of the gap that exists between the new bituminous and the adjacent soils. And they're down there, Larry and me this afternoon, hauled in a little bit of extra gravel on our Ironman parking lot. It's been blue top, so it is ready to be paved. And they indicated to Larry that that would be done very shortly. And then on our Fifth Street South project, they're putting soil in the boulevard areas. The concrete crew had to pull out for a couple of days, were told they'll be back Friday, I believe. And there's one or two days left of putting in primarily the handicap ramps at the intersections. And then really, what's left is just the sodding and the paving of the streets. And we expect all of that, we don't have a definite schedule of which order they're going to be done in, but that work should all be done within the next couple of weeks. So things are progressing well, and with nice dry weather.
Perfect. We received a lot of compliments about the alleys and streets overlaid. Can't wait to do more.
Yeah, Larry and I are putting together, this is for next year already, so show us some money, we'll spend it.
Thank you, Jim. Public Works, Larry, good evening.
Something on the agenda, Mayor, so I'll pick updates. We are leaving the flags up till next week, so, and the temperatures are still very well. It looks to be in the 60s end of next week, so we'll get the flags down after the big bike weekend. We ordered delivery of our salt today. I know it's kind of, I had to say it, so it's going to come, we'll need salt and sand. So we ordered that today, it'll be here end of the week, or Monday. And we'll mix that up and get it in the salt shed in preparation for that. We're readying equipment right along with that. If you see us out driving around taking pictures, slow in the alley, we're doing FEMA site visits. And so Tiffany and I have been driving around, a lot of curious, you know, residence stuff as such. You know, you don't normally see people in your alley, or if they are in your alley, you're curious, but that's what we're doing. So we're doing FEMA pictures and site visits, so we're out doing that now. And you'll see the streets sweepers soon, as the trees release the rest of their leaves. Even right out here, they're still green in some respects. It's kind of weird, I don't fully understand why it's so dry, they're stressed. You'd think they'd be just dead and released, but they're just, some are still green. So it's kind of a weird year. And then we buttoned up our street patches for this year in our water and sewer digs. So those sit a year, they go through a freestyle, like, you know, some of our infrastructure projects. So if you had repairs done in front of your property this year, they'll be fixed next year. And so we did those ones from the previous year today, so. With that, any questions, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Parks Trails Rec. Director, Bridget, good evening.
Good evening, no report. Marty, do you have a really great update summary of the NC race? So I don't need to parrot that, but yeah.
Thank you, Bridget. Library Supervisor, Katie. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Next Tuesday, we will be hosting our annual third grade field trip to the library. Kids will be getting a tour, issuing their first library cards, in addition to some other crafts and activities that we've got planned for their visit. The third graders always bring a level of enthusiasm that we look forward to every year. Also this month, we're going to be partnering with Recovery Alliance in their Blue Bucket Winter Gear Drive. So at the library, we'll be collecting new and gently used winter gear. So they're looking for jackets, and hats, and mittens, gloves, scarves, hand warmers, socks, and all other winter gear for all ages. So all sizes, all ages. And then the items will be distributed in the service area for those that are in need. And so the bucket is at the library now, and will be there until November 7th. And that's it.
Thank you. City Attorney, Brian, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, nice to be here. No formal report, but I am happy to field any questions that the council may have, if I may.
Go on, question.
Sure.
Where we at on light citations?
Have we issued any more?
Yeah, we issued light citations, I don't think anything has gone to court.
I haven't seen them come through.
I haven't gotten any notifications yet.
Good question regarding that. We always say that the issue is fighting back and forth, and then sometimes the judges even just throw it out. Eventually, at the start of a year, would it be beneficial for the council to draft a letter to send to the justice system as far as what our concerns are, and the battle that we're fighting on this level, and how their actions can sometimes hinder ours?
I'll be careful. So technically, I mean, we could write a, we could write a letter to the court administrator. We should not write a letter to the judges, because they are, especially if they have any cases pending before them, which it sounds like they very well may at this time of year.
That's not influenced.
Yeah, we shouldn't try to communicate directly with the courts. They should be independent and impartial to make their decisions. But we can, we could communicate with the court administrator. We'll talk after the meeting about that.
Thank you. City Clerk, Treasurer, Devin, good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to give a pretty quick update, I don't have anything formal on the agenda. Just kind of give you an idea of what I've been working on. We did have that working session with the budget. Still working on narrowing that budget, but I think we've made some progress. So I look forward to the next working session on that. 2024 amendments, still kind of learning Eileen's process for the 2024 amendments, but that's, will be forthcoming in the next month or so. And then public utilities rates, and those budgets, me and Larry have been working on that. So we're honing in on getting those rates set at our next public utilities meeting. Then Christie's been helping me a lot with the election preparation for the next month. That's going to be coming up, and we're going to have a big deal. So if you have any questions, or if you can field any, if anybody has anything.
Thank you, Devin.
Thank you.
City Administrator, Stephanie, good evening.
Good evening, just a quick update from the EDA. We are, now that Fifth Street's getting closer to be finished, we're working on that infill lot program. We've narrowed it down to a few lots that we're really going to hone in on. Bob's been working on that. We also are working on the industrial park, and really start to advertise some of those vacant lots that we currently still have out there. Look for some buyers on those lots, they're ready to go. I also have Bob working on that, just to get some marketing out. So he'll see some of that coming out soon.
Thank you. Any questions for the administrator?
I have one, which lots are you referring to?
For the industrial park? There's some lots that are city-owned that aren't being occupied currently.
Are they towards the west end, or are they, are you talking about like Passer and Alharn's built that way?
There's two that are closer to the highway, right when you come in would be right across from, kind of kitty quarter from the industries.
Yeah.
Right, yep. And then there's some on the back side, too.
The south side of Sixth Street, east of.
Sorry, I don't understand.
Okay, moving on. Consent agenda, which is the list of bills, communications, minutes from council meeting, and payroll overtime. If there's nothing to add or correct, I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I mean, no unfinished business, we will move on to new business, Mandy.
I have something on the unfinished business. Is there any conclusion about this mine land reclamation matching grants? Or do you have anything at all that we can put towards that? Looking for any potential leftover money or 2024 budget to potentially apply for a mine land reclamation grant?
Thirty thousand, three, looking for.
Maybe ten, fifteen thousand as a minimum, I think would be the minimum. I'll be consulting the investigation into that.
I don't believe so, I mean, right now, I don't think I'm for grabbing any other money.
Maybe that's something we can look at next budget meeting?
Yeah, well, I guess in that working session, we ended up, the, where we're at in the 2024 budget. And I mean, it's, it gives you the 2024 budgeted amounts, and where we're at in the 2024 actual. Of course, we're three quarters of the way through the year, so until we get all four months, it's kind of hard to know what's left over in the budget. But that's one of the things that I'll be working on, once I get the 2025 budget figured out, is looking back at 2024, once they have a little bit more time. But yeah, those reports and that working session are basically where we're currently at, so.
Okay, moving on, Mandy. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just asking for support of the resolution to accept funds from the ITRRE residential redevelopment program. On the resolution, you'll see I have three houses and four garages listed. And at the very last minute, I was able to approve a release from the old Buchanan nursing home. So that was an addition to the grant application. For sure, the four garages and three houses will come down before the end of the year. I may have to wait on the last address there, just for funding purposes and budgeting. So I'm just asking for approval of the resolution, please.
Council, I'd look for a motion to approve resolution 1024-83. Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion?
As soon as I read this, I was hooting and hollering. Yeah, go Mandy!
Now we just got to find money, so we can put some more up. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Jim.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. If you would please turn to page 16, 17, and 18. Earlier this evening, we had the public hearing on the facility plan for our five-year capital improvement infrastructure replacement facility plan. And what I'm requesting now is for you to adopt the attached resolution 1024-84, which is adopting that five-year facility plan and authorizing its reporting to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. That is a step in our securing of funds for future projects. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I would recommend adoption of that resolution, please.
And council? Going over our previous meeting here, I look for a motion to approve resolution 1024-84.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. If you will, turn to page 19 and 20. We have an inquiry, or questions raised by the Minnesota Department of Transportation in relation to their overlay project that they're proposing in fiscal year 2027. And that's kind of the Millan Overlay project, starting here at Fourth Avenue and Highway 73, going down to the intersection, and then going north up to McNiven Road. And as their traffic engineering department looked at it, they had several questions, they wanted input from the city on several suggestions they had, and I outlined those on page 19. One is kind of the driveway and access or egress opening for the drive-up bank just north of the library. It's extremely wide right now. And I guess my thought or my recommendation, as we talked about in staff, was to narrow that up, to keep, there is a dedicated alleyway, 16-foot alleyway on the north side of the library. I would suggest, we do want to keep that, and I would suggest keeping that driveway opening, but allowing them to restrict that, to that opening, cutting down the width, if you will, of that driveway opening, egress, egress, ingress, access, ingress, egress from the bank when they do this. So we're still talking about 2027. And then the other one was of where Fourth Avenue ties back into Highway 73 up by the Lucky 7th. And they were suggesting maybe the closing of that west leg of the 12th Street, Truck Highway 73 intersection. And in my discussion with them, and in our staff meeting, Fourth Avenue is certainly more relevant to traffic pattern. It's a collector force. And my thought or recommendation, the two intersections aren't quite close together. My suggestion or recommendation would be that we close the west leg, that short leg between Fourth Avenue and Truck Highway 73, right at 12th Street. Keep that intersection just to the north of it, where Fourth Avenue ties back into Highway 73. And there's good separation from the east leg of 12th Street, such that you don't have turning movement conflicts at that point, and there's good site distance. They're asking for the city's input, we did discuss that at staff meeting a couple of weeks ago. And we're just seeking council advice or recommendations, or any differences or recommendations that you might have that we would forward. But we're looking at this, we're still looking at 2027 before this project is on their schedules.
Mr. Rep. Allen, just ask you a question. I know that in the, the first paragraph that he wrote, talks about possible traffic control changes on the Third Avenue Lake Street intersection. Is this, this one right here, right? Right by the, where we have the four stops?
Yeah, the signal where they were doing that experimental role, in terms of experimenting with a four-way stop, as opposed to the existing signals. And there was another option of putting in a small diameter roundabout and so forth. And those decisions are still down the road. This is really more regarding intersections or access driveways that they're looking for. There's nothing that's final here, they're just looking for thoughts, ideas, recommendations coming back from the city. Do we have any strong objections, I guess is what it amounts to, with these two suggested changes that Mendez is making?
I guess the biggest thing is, I, I don't want the traffic lights to go. That's my biggest. But I like the bump when you guys had that bump.
The roundabout?
Well, not the roundabout, it was the, by the old fire hall, the bump boat. So people like.
Although pedestrian traffic can have smaller.
Oh, where they had the white cones and.
Yeah, during the test. The test, yeah, during the test room. I like that idea.
In that regards, I had a notice today that Susan pointed out to me as well, is that at least they're having a corridor study committee meeting starting October 24th, a Thursday afternoon at 1:00. That they're inviting certain pieces. And then you're going to have a couple of open meetings, I think, later that day. And then again, sometime in November, there is.
There's a focus group at, where they, there's a meeting with the school board and like engineer, emergency. That's at one, at 3:00 is the focus group. And then later in November, there'll be a public informational meeting on November 4th.
And that is regarding?
There's going to be a lot of, excuse me. So there's going to be a lot of chances and opportunities for input regarding that intersection, other features that they're going to be looking at, so. These were just two that came from their traffic engineering departments, as they were looking in terms of ingress, egress, access locations along Highway 73, so.
Well, with that question as well, along Highway 73, and you know how you highlighted it in green, is this going to be a problem for people trying to get to McNiven Road?
No, no, it's the existing intersection that's here right now.
Yes. Will we just keep that? Or would it be blocked off?
It's a block to the south.
12th Street is at half a block or to the south, which would be the four-legged intersection is where 12th Street comes across April. And our thought. And our thought would be just to vacate or close off that short piece on twelfth Street, which would be the west leg of that twelfth Street intersection. It'd be the west leg of of the-
People can still go that way and turn?
Oh yeah, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
They still can get to where they need to go?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, twel- twelfth twelfth Street is really kind of a minor local collector street that doesn't have much traffic. And with the amount of traffic that bypasses Highway seventy three and uses our Fourth Avenue right now, that's certainly a more prominent movement than one that I think would be better suited for our needs.
Okay.
Serving the ci- the city, the citizens of the city.
Mr. Mayor, and I also have people reach out to me about the intersection. They've seen some close calls, I've seen a couple myself, so I kind of would recommend that you talk about it.
Yeah, I totally agree with number one. Number two, I think those are good moves. We feel they have alley north of here and then up at twelve street. And if you do have a chance to talk to them, I would see if they'd done any evaluation of that third street northwest intersection as far as to catch bases and storm pipe to make sure it's all still in good order and no issues with anything. Start plugging their block at the year right.
Yeah, and like I said, they fired a consultant to know to start working on that corridor study. And that's really the beginning of the process, it sounds like, starting next week and continuing on for probably the next couple of years now.
Yeah, I think four-way stop is the way to go. I think we should get rid of both of our traffic lights and do a four-way stop. Slows everybody down, gives everybody a, it's much safer. Traffic I think flows just as well, if not better. And you don't have people racing to the red lights.
Or using Fourth Avenue West. I just, as you know, I'm a traffic engineer by background as well. I thought the four-way stop was operating extremely well.
Till they changed it and almost ran a red light. You know, when they went back. Uh, let's get back onto this right here. That's a long conversation for another night. Cheyenne, any opinions?
No.
No? Myself either. I think we can tell them that uh, those, go with those recommendations. Thank you Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Jim.
And then, um, I think in a handoff before you have to have the updated or the revised copy of pay application number seven for our fifth street south project. And, um, uh, if you, uh, then look at, well, I guess the new updated one doesn't have the page numbers. But again, uh, if you go to the pay application itself, if you look at the, uh, third, uh, four comes from the right side, the quantity exists period and the amount exists period. Uh, you can pick out, read the major events, uh, that occurred during the month of September. Uh, bringing in the, uh, towards the bottom of the page, agri base class- classifying uh, that the city furnishes, uh, starting to put down that base layer of gravel for our streets. And then on the back side, you can see a lot of pavement for four-inch concrete walks, concrete curb and gutter, six-inch concrete driveway pavements, uh, finishing up on water main and water services as well as sanitary sewer and and service lines on that stuff. All items that were over five thousand dollars in value accomplished during the month of September. Then if you would go back then to, uh, the first page, I guess, of the pay application. As you see, the original contract amount is two million two hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. The work completed to date as detailed in those following sheets is one million eight hundred ninety thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars and seventeen cents, which constitutes about a little over eighty-three percent of the construction cost. From that, we retain the five percent, uh, retainage, which is just over ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars. You see, the previous payments are, uh, uh, just under one million four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And the amount due this pay application then is three hundred sixty-six thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. And that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but would recommend uh, the approval of pay application number seven in that amount of three hundred sixty-six thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents.
Thank you Jim. And council, I'd look for a motion to approve that pay application number seven.
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you April.
Support.
Thank you Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
And then, Mayor, if you and the council return to pages twenty-six and twenty-seven, really, we just need to go to page twenty-seven. Uh, there is no actual work performed during this past month. All that's really involved in this pay application is the payment of the retainage from the previous pay application. If you look on page twenty-seven, uh, again, you'll see the original contract amount of just under eleven million two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the total work completed, which has not changed from last month, is, uh, ten million nine hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. The retainage, um, is the amount of the current payment due that you see down in line. I have the number eight. Uh, that was the five percent retainage last month, four hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred two dollars and sixty-eight cents. That is what's being recommended as payment on this pay application. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I think there'll be one additional, um, adjustment coming. I think there's some monies that are coming back, uh, but I don't know exactly what that schedule is of, uh, of what was paid to the contractor, A and P, that we're getting refunded. I don't know the details or the amount at this point, but hopefully there'll just be one more pay application made with those final adjustments.
Okay. Council, I'd look for a motion to approve pay application number nineteen, the amount of four hundred fifty-four thousand six hundred two dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Make a motion.
Thank you Jed.
Support.
Thank you Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you Jim. Hey Stephanie.
Good evening, council. Come in Roger. Um, item I have on the agenda today is a contract agreement with Rogers Online Corporation. I do see one typo in this contract. I apologize for that. Um, obviously, the effective date of September first, it would be if it's approved by council today, it would be after this meeting. Um, and since we have Roger here today, um, we are working with him, um, with the Public Safety Building. He did a tremendous amount of work for us to get that building up and running, um, on an hourly basis. So we're looking at him taking over some IT services for the city. He'd work in conjunction with CTC, uh, so the city would have Roger and CTC and American Eagle, who we already contracted with for the camera systems. This is kind of, um, as you know, we've been working on IT services for quite some time. And this feels like the most appropriate way to go for us. Um, Roger's done very good work for us at this point, and I know he's worked with some of our staff members at other cities. Um, if you want to just go into a little bit about you and what you could do for the city here?
Sure. So my name is Roger Desalitz. Um, good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, actually, I spent a little bit of my childhood here in Chisholm. My grandmother grew up on Fourth Street. Westerland was their last name on that side of the family. So I'm familiar with the town, so it's kind of a privilege to be here. But anyways, uh, when it comes to technical stuff, I won't bore you with all the main things, but this is basically a proposal to take care of all of the IT needs within the city and all of the small, um, out parts of the city, the garage or the library or whatever it is, on a remote, uh, session. And then any additional onsite work that might be necessarily would be billed as the contract lays out, which is normally how most places do that. As to my experience and my company, I've got, um, three employees. But my experience, I've been working with cities for over twenty years, uh, mostly on the east part of the range. So it's for, kind of started moving this way, but, um, mostly familiar with the police department. So, uh, is kind of where we got started with the public safety. That's most of my familiarity. But I also do IT work for the city of Virginia. Said it contracted there, city of Evolith, um, and some of the smaller cities around there to like fail and tower brighting, things like that. So that's kind of what I expanded, but I keep my accounts limited so that my response time is what what I like to kind of praise myself on. And I hope that I can serve in that manner here, and that's kind of what's all proposed there.
Welcome Roger. Nice to meet you, and I appreciate your assistance thus far. Um, yeah, I mean, uh, I lean on Stephanie's judgment and, um, I believe this would be a good addition to the city, so I I'm in favor of this. I'm not sure if the council has any questions. Anyone else? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to, uh, approve the contract with Rogers Online Corpora- Corporation IT service. And with the one change, um, of the date to October ninth, twenty twenty four.
And I'll prorate that month even though I've already been helping.
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Jed.
Support.
Thank you Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Roger. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Okay, moving on to myself. Um, before you have the EPA fiscal year twenty twenty five Brown's Field Community Wide Assessment Grant. Before you, you have the, um, letter of support for our approval. Um, I believe Virginia is the one that kind of leads this one off. Uh, so I'd look for your motion to, uh, support this letter.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I I support this letter and thanks for writing it up. And it's really cool that they want to be the fiscal agent and, uh, it's looking like that this will be a a good asset for us to use the undeveloped properties and, um, reuse and revitalization of, you know, I was thinking of the old fire hall and stuff like that, you know, just. I'll make that motion.
Thank you April. Is there support?
No second.
Thank you Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next under here, uh, posting for open seats, boards and commissions. Thank you Susan for your diligent work on putting this together, uh, getting ahead of it. Um, you know, you have the list in front of you. I will read them off real quick for those at home. But, uh, we do have terms open, uh, one position open for the airport authority, which is a three-year term. One position for the Central Iron Range Sanitary Sewer District, one-year term for the Economic Development Authority, a three-year term for the Parks Trails Rec Board, uh, one-year term for the Housing Redevelopment Authority, one ter- one. I'm saying terms. Let me say, these are positions open. We have one, three positions open for the Parks and Trails, one position open for the HRA, one for the library board, two for the, ah, one two-year term for the library board, two three-year terms for the library board. We have one position open for the planning and zoning, two positions open for the public utilities, and one position open for the police commission. You can find these, uh, in the applications at City Hall. Um, again, we'd just like to say anyone who is interested, please come down. Um, this is your opportunity to give back to the community. Um, any information you can give us in addition to what's on the, uh, application, you know, please go into detail for us. Um, you know, let us know about you and why, you know, what you're looking to accomplish. And, um, yeah, we'd love, uh, the input from the community. So I would look for a motion to, um, approve the posting for these open seats on the boards and commissions. Do we? Yeah, that's informational. It's been a day. It's been a day.
And just so the council is aware, we are working at updating the applications. I know that was a discussion at our last, um, time when we were appointing positions to these people, to these board positions. Now you have Neil.
Oh, it's been a day.
So we are working with each department head to make sure that the applications are more specific towards the role that they will be doing. So you'd be getting more information from the people that are applying for these positions, and it's not just one generic per one. So we're working towards that, and we'll have that posted. They'll be posted on the website when they're ready to go.
Thank you Stephanie. All right, I'm the instructor. Maybe you should give me a physical new leaf here. Quick assessment, all right? Yes, blood sugar. All right, council, I would like to, uh, schedule a working, a budget working session. Uh, we talked about it last time about having to get back in touch with this. Any chance November fourth works?
It works for me.
It works for me. Do we have a plan?
Not here, party's board meeting.
No? Are you guys at four? Or is it five?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, yeah.
You should go pouring after two.
Okay. Okay.
Um.
It's gonna make things more interesting.
Now, the following week will be veterans unless we did it on November twelfth.
That's the MINDOT open house.
MINDOT open house.
What time is MINDOT?
What time is that open house?
Location?
Senior Center.
And that's for the one sixty-nine corridor?
Corridor.
Correct.
Okay, corridor, okay. Well, very important one.
Seventy-three, yeah, to one sixty-nine.
Hmm.
After meeting on thirteenth?
No, we could do it after the meeting on thirteenth. Could be a long day, but, um, I don't have a lot of other available dates.
I don't want to do thirteenth.
Who's buying lunch or dinner or whatever?
Number eighteen. Number eighteen.
So we gotta stay here till twelve, and that's all we gotta do.
November sixth?
No.
November sixth?
No, I'm unavailable to sixth. Hope on November eighteenth?
Just be good with me.
April?
Yes.
Cheyenne?
Yes.
Jed?
Is it getting too late or is it all?
Uh, no, we have, uh, the eighteenth, we can get squared in before, uh, I think too late would be the in decen- was it December?
It's the first meeting in December where we have the truth and taxation.
First meeting in December? Okay.
November eighteenth?
Works for me. I'd look for a motion for November eighteenth at five thirty PM or five PM. Five thirty?
Make a motion.
Thank you Jed, November thirteenth, five thirty PM.
Support.
Thank you Cheyenne.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, I see.
Eighteenth.
November eighteenth at five thirty. Thank you, counselor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Anything for miscellaneous? Okay, we will now recess into a closed session in compliance with statute thirteen D point zero three, labor agreement for building official zoning administrator contract. Thank you all. Have a good night.